Did you ever see this, you know, in private? It's underwriting process. So, all new new boards to do or, um, yes. But I'm assuming we have all these things over there. Two years of financials and all that stuff. And the rest of the stuff, I gotta work at the school, get my project done, and all that.
Here, I'll just have it all in this, if you want a this copy versus paper copy. So I can get a hold of Harold and let you know.
We gotta figure out what kind of process we're gonna do. There'll be more.
Pure for one of these hours.
When you're involved in the process, probably not, probably can't. All right. Get this party started. In the public order, city council meeting from Monday, September ninth, eight P M. Does everyone have a chance to look through the minutes from last month's meeting? If so, are there any changes, corrections, additions? I don't think I'm open to approve the minutes.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the agenda, of course, when Sam sent up a thing, I wasn't, I was kinda busy. So we have to add, we have to have a call with Kyle for more engineering tonight. So he'll be added to, he'll be, I guess, our one visitor of the evening. And he'll talk through, he said it's gonna take him a few months and talk through kind of an update on where. We're up at that, next steps and stuff like that. And then for new business, we'll have to add the hiring process for Sam's position. Have to figure out what kind of process we wanna go through. Who's gonna be involved in the decision making, interviewing, et cetera. And finally got all the stuff from Isaac regarding that Presley thing. So that needs to be signed for a note, I guess, they make that all doable, so. And then I have paperwork here for continuing the Bank of North Dakota loan paperwork. So, work with Sam and what's his name? And, um, look at this thing. Going to school and there just some questions around like what's our current enrollment and future enrollment, stuff like that. They wanna see what our current debt levels are and stuff like that. So that's gotta be done as well. Hopefully I'll be in the field in time this week, so. All right, anything else to add to the agenda? I don't think there's a motion to approve it with the changes. Stevens.
All move.
Larry, second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So I suppose we will do our call with cut out. Hopefully we'll get it here.
Hello, this is Kyle.
Hey Kyle, Jeff Reiser.
Hey Jeff, how are you?
Good. Um, got you on speakerphone with the council and our guests, so, um, I will turn it over to you. And what do you got for us?
Okay, so, um, with regards to the, the street improvement project. So we, uh, we had our, uh, our public hearing. And just kinda, from that standpoint, noted down. Given the public information, I'm not sure what kind of feedback you guys have gotten in the community there. But basically, um, looking at the project, you know, as we talked before, we looked at, uh, you know, the residential streets throughout the community being done. There, there is, um, a couple of alternatives on the project that we will continue to look at. That's the, uh, elevator road and that west access road. So that, that would be something as we move forward where we would continue to have discussions on whether those are included in the project or not. If we move forward, if we move forward, they can be left in the project as alternates. Um, and as you go down the road, they can be bid as alternates and you can make decisions, uh, later on as well. So those are the options, kind of moving forward. Uh, if the community wishes to move forward, there would be some resolutions that, uh, you should go through, which would start the protest process, uh, which is what you have, due by North Dakota state law. And so, uh, um, that is kind of the next step along with if we wanted to conduct any additional public meetings to continue to get the information out there, uh, as well as potential, uh, mailers or things like that. If the city wants to get information out to the community as well. So, uh, from the council standpoint, feedback from the public hearing, uh, where you guys are at? Questions on the project for me?
I guess the feedback I've gotten was both ways. But I think we should proceed along with the, um, the assessment committee and come up with some definite numbers and, uh, options, you know, like Front Street and the West Entrance. What effect it would have if we eliminate it, go back to gravel. And at that point, then open it up to the protest period, once we have definite numbers of how we would assess and et cetera.
Yep. Okay.
Yes, the feedback I got, I think, were a little more probably positive than, than negative, but obviously some on both sides of the fence, but. I guess anyways, like, uh, look at the same.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So, so what's, um, so what's next? If we, if we get, I mean, we wanna take the next step, it looks like.
Okay, so if we're gonna take the next step, we can go down the road. So, uh, there, we gotta start the legal process. So there will be a couple, or a few resolutions that we would approve tonight. And then, um, that would, you know, basically start our process and allow people then to start the protest process. Okay?
Yep.
So what we would, what we would do, and I'll just, we'll have to do these individually, but number one is we would create an, uh, an improvement district. And so basically that would be the, the assessment district and we're doing a citywide project. So it's gonna be the, uh, city limits basically will be our, uh, assessment district. Then, uh, you will direct the engineer to prepare, uh, an engineer's report. And basically the engineer's report is gonna consist of a cost estimate, uh, along with, uh, a map, which is what we, you know, essentially the project we showed at the public hearing. And then, um, and then we would approve the engineer's report. And then we need to, um, then we need to finalize the project funding. So you guys, you guys, what about, uh, the financing, uh, paperwork, I think was emailed to the city, is that correct?
Yeah, I have it.
Okay, so we just have to give that, uh, signed and sent in? And then, uh, and then we have to, uh, publish, then we have to adopt the resolution of necessity. And then, um, then from there, we figure out, uh, you know, when in the future we can hold our, our protest hearing. And that'll be down the road, you know, a month, month and a half or so.
Okay. So basically, first things first, we need someone to make a motion to.
Yep, so, yep, so first things first, so the first one would be we need a motion, uh, creating the improvement district for street improvement district twenty twenty.
Okay. Have a motion? So, Andy?
Second.
Jeff, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, next?
Okay, then we need a motion directing the engineer to prepare, uh, the engineer's report.
Motion on that?
Move, so move.
Larry, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, okay?
Okay, so then that engineer's report, like I said, is the cost estimate and the, uh, the map of the street work that is being done, which was presented at the public hearing. So then, um, we should, uh, publish for another, uh, motion approving the engineer's report.
You have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Jeffrey, second?
Second.
Andy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and then the last one is a resolution adopting, uh, or a motion adopting a resolution of necessity.
You have a motion on that?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Andy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so that, as far as motions go, that is all that we need for tonight. Uh, we will get together with you on setting up the, uh, protest hearing. We'll, we'll have a publication that will go in the newspaper, uh, will help you put that together. Uh, and then we'll set a date for that protest hearing out into the future. Uh, and we'll get that information out to everyone. And, um, and then probably, you know, we can discuss during that thirty day process then, or during that protest hearing process. You know, if we wanna do another public hearing out there to again, just get further information out, you know, we can figure that out in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Okay, and then that, that funding paperwork, make sure you get that filled out and sent in.
Yep.
If you have any questions on that, let us know.
Okay.
Okay?
I have a question.
So, um, so for tonight, uh, that really is all that we need to do. And, and like I said, we just need to set up that, we'll get together and set up that protest hearing. Uh, we'll have to kind of just figure out legally how far out it has to be, because there's a certain time limit on everything.
Yep.
Um, so we just, we'll have to figure out the dates with the publishing of the newspaper and all that stuff. So we'll just, once we figure out what the, what's publishing day is of the local newspaper, then we can start backing out these for what we need for a protest hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, does anyone have any questions for us? Okay, thanks Kyle.
All right, thank you. Everybody have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
Are you going to have the assessments out before you have a protest hearing? Because how can you protest something when you don't know the cost? So that's what I wanna know. You're gonna set up your assessment board and then you're gonna get the assessments together first before you have the hearing?
The plan, yeah, the plan would be to have a second meeting and have those numbers available. Cause they'll have made further decisions and we should, I mean, again, have very, very close numbers.
So you're gonna discuss tonight putting an assessment board together so that you can get that going? And then, um, run a hear, uh, hear, a protest hearing after you come off the assessment?
Yep.
Okay.
I don't really see any other way, because it's kinda hard to protest something if you, yeah.
Wouldn't it make more sense to put the water pipes in before you do a new road? Or, or you place them five years down the line?
They're not due, they're not due up for replacement.
We just put them in.
Two thousand.
They were put in, uh, all those water lines were replaced in?
Oh eight, wasn't it? First of all eight?
No, that was a shirt line.
Two thousand and?
But we have all plastic water lines.
Oh, okay.
There are no, uh, the old ductile pipe. I think there might be one short stretch up in Ardell with no, in that corner of town.
Uh, I, I was just wondering, I mean, it makes sense.
I couldn't tell you, it was seventy, I believe it was seventy something. They did all the water lines.
Okay.
And the shirt lines were done in two thousand twelve? Was it ten? Yeah, they're about eight or nine years ago.
Okay.
All right, Sam, what do you got for, all right, Bill, you got any suggestions?
Uh, I don't have much. I've got talks to reflect about that retaining wall, hasn't gotten back to me yet.
Okay.
Um, I got a quote to, or I haven't got the quote yet, D W O L, we're gonna send a quote to do a new storm sewer drain down here by Brett Williams.
Okay.
Get that, cause there's a hole forming in his yard.
Oh, really? It's a cool.
We don't know if it's coming from the ductile, the old ductile that's in there.
Oh.
Or if it was just a random hole. But we gotta do some exploring with that first. That garbage issue, we had, what was the last one? We had that pickup, uh, pickup parked right in front of the dumpster, so we couldn't dumpster, or dump it.
Pickup in a trailer would've tried to.
So I took pictures of it and showed more and where it, I think I sent her the pictures, so.
Okay. Why'd you go up there with her and did she, did she pay? Debbie, Zomer?
I haven't received anything yet.
Okay, awesome. Anything else, Bill? You got anything on? What do you have for us, Sam?
I have the budget. There should be eleven pages printed out right there in front of you boys. Within fifty dollars of the approval that we usually get from Hokin County saying that that's how much we can collect on, so. I don't know if you guys have any questions, I mean, I can go through them page by page if you want. But I mean, you've seen these year after year after year, you've all seen them, so. But throw, if you have questions, I can answer them for you. The only one that is ever a concern is probably the building permits.
Right.
And then I didn't up snow removal, I kept it the same as last year, so.
Have we seen anything from our municipal judge that we've been seeing so much lately?
Um, he called in today. He said, he just asked if there'd been anything going on. I said, no, not really, come back to your desk. So nothing's really.
So you included ten thousand for the water tower, right?
Yeah. I do every year, just in case, as a backup plan.
I love, well, it's good, it's good.
I mean, we don't need to spend that money, but it's there if we ever need it, in that budget.
Okay. Any questions for Sam? On the annual budget? If not, he'll take a motion to approve it.
Move to approve.
Second? Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Received two resumes for the auditor position. Connie Messon turned hers in to me. I received two selects, I'm gonna hear this evening. So are you gonna sit with me on that and help me there? Or is someone else on the council lawn to take on that burden and help us then?
Order view. Maybe we should add at least one more to the council, but I, it's not gonna happen. I don't know if I can or not, so.
You cannot, it's a conflict of interest for you.
We were just talking about earlier, so it's not, so, but it'd be nice if we get one more from us on there.
Jeffrey? Yeah? Okay. I'll reach out to, to you and the other people and see what we can get set up and try to get this done. That work?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Don't think we need any kind of motion on that. Um, water sewer policing, Andy. Park streets lighting, Jeffrey?
Nope, it's been lights out lately.
Nope.
That's one of my houses still flickering.
You have a new one?
Yeah. That new one's flickering?
Yeah.
That's an LED?
No, it's not an LED.
Oh. Okay. Cause I'm guessing it will become one, live in the community. Um, Larry, you got anything to refer to for ambulance stuff?
No.
Lauren?
Um, no building permits, but demolition permits, there's, right, four, four. United Church of Christ, Gap Community Cafe, Trevor Molenhauer, City of Gackel. Um, we did the asbestos inspection and, um, still working on it. A lot of people were, but, um, the cafe and the city owned house are, there's no asbestos. We're clear to go on those. The church was the only one that come back hot. And, um, we had L and M contractors out of Jamestown removing the asbestos. As far as demolition, I got five hundred dollar deposit checks. Being we're running so late in the year, I think we, which has nothing to do with the city, I guess, let's put it that way. The church, we're gonna try to get it demolished if Nino can get here. The cafe and the house, I think we should cancel it, we're just getting too late in the year. It's been quite a learning curve. I've worked, spent a lot of time with the state health department on it. And basically, if it's a commercial building, all commercial buildings, um, put it this way, you need asbestos inspections down here on every building with each section of single family dwelling. Do not need a, um, asbestos inspection. But the demolition or the, um, disposal is a completely separate issue and nobody is exempt from that. When it gets to disposal, that's entirely different ballgame. Gackel does have a registered landfill. But it's very particular what we take out there. We're gonna have to be more particular as time goes down the road. What we accept, what we do not accept. And, um, so that's kind of in a nutshell. As far as the, the request for the demolition permits, they're good for a year. So I think we're gonna include or do the four. And hopefully in spring, we can move ahead with the remaining.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve, C U C, Cafe, Trevor Molenhauer and City of Gackel for demolition permits. Jeffrey, second? Andy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Is that all you have?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so Dakota pump, all business. Dakota pump is cleared, cleaned, maintained, lift station, all the backhoes here to fix the curb stops.
Public, we're supposed to flush that one out, aren't we? Out with the, with the hydro bag?
Yeah, we gotta get it sucked out. Well, just pull for me, please.
And what we use the fire truck to stir it.
Okay.
And a hydro bag to suck it, all the deposits and all.
Sure. Um, have a public meeting at the fire hall? Samantha's resignation and Zomer's garage, or garbage issues, so. Um, as far as new business, I guess we just have a raffle permit for Doug Fest. David Brooks is in here, gotta get a motion to approve a raffle permit.
So move.
Second? Jeffrey, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, I suppose we need to look at, approve bills.
They're not in a fancy little printout for you this time?
I know.
I didn't have time, so that's just right from quick books.
Same.
Same, nothing new.
They're really, you have to say, look through them.
So they're just really very detailed, as opposed to what you're used to.
Same.
Like that, uh, people that did at the U C C church.
Yep, I billed out everybody separately and Doug is paid and so is U C C.
Okay. Oh, did you get a invoice from, I just, resume and all?
I did.
Like a hundred and?
Yep, and that was paid out too. I don't know if it was paid out, this was probably was paid out just a couple of days ago.
Okay. I see, she sent me that in like a W V D file, but I have no idea how to open that. And that's for that presser deed?
Oh.
So I don't know, I'll have to follow up with everybody. All right, there's no other new business. Set a time for the next meeting, October seventh at eight P M, everyone. Month of seven. You keep it at eight or go seven? Any thoughts, preferences?
It's up to you guys. I'll go for me.
Okay, we'll leave it, oh, we'll go to. Okay, we'll leave it, I'll, I'll go to, we'll go to seven P M.
Seven?
Yeah.
It's time.
It's late enough in the air. Um, we can be coming up here dark. All right, that's all I got, I think I must do adjourned. So, go.
Uh, on behalf of Logan County, I would like to ask the city council if we could hook to your water system and how much that would cost us? We wanna put water in the bathroom in the county shop next year and a sewage system and everything, so. What will that cost us to hook up to someplace on the east and bring it to the west?
All the way up to the county shop?
Yeah, no, the county, yeah, no, across the road.
But, because you're gonna have your own sewer system, huh?
Right, mm-hmm, yeah, unless you guys will put it in for it. But you give a sewer, but it's not the city, you kind of wanna do that.
Give it a backhaul, put it in. Yeah, I don't know if we get it, get it in the elevator.
Now we'll put in, we'll put in a system.
So you just want water, you said?
We just want water.
Better bed that out? Do walls look old?
Well, no, we, I mean, we'll do the work, if you just tell the public it's gonna be caught. We can uh, we can hire everybody, as long as you guys are there showing, hooking up for us.
It's a twenty dollar minimum and then a four dollars per thousand doll, for per thousand gallons after that. So it depends on.
Twenty dollars to hook up?
Twenty dollars every?
Nothing to hook up?
I don't know, you said you were taking care of that.
Yeah. Are you talking like, how, you're talking, you want us to hook it up and then build, build the county for that time, is that what you're?
You need a special permit to hook up to a water line. I, I found that out when I was doing septic system. I don't think, I don't, you guys require?
Have to look into it.
Great, I guess, we'll, we'll probably do some checking.
But it's gotta be.
I don't know if I have an answer for you tonight.
Get a meter, a T-bone, shit on.
Well, we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll have one over there when we're done, we'll have, just like everybody else in town does, so.
Can't imagine we need a special permit, it's our water line.
We have to get a permit to go across the highway, I know that.
Hopefully go under it.
Um, we'll do some digging.
Okay.
And get to some better numbers before we.
Yeah.
Okay.
See if we had anyone since I've been on it, right? So, I guess I've, we've never had one since I've been on it.
What are you looking at for a timeframe? Well, probably next summer sometime.
Okay, all right, we'll get a thing about that.
Mm-hmm.
Location.
Yeah, I checked, I think over it.
Should I just forget it?
I don't see a problem with that, that's a good thing.
If, if we put the uh, shut off valve, let the county, you guys will pay for everything, right?
It was in city limits.
Yeah.
That's a wrong question.
What's that?
I think it's your expense to get it.
I know that. Yeah, shut off valve, probably, shut off valve will probably be five feet away from the, where we hook up to the thing, right?
Well, gives us some time to look at it, so.
Okay.
Why didn't you get on the agenda?
Yeah, it was supposed to be on the agenda previous one day by noon.
Oh yeah?
Yeah.
Come to the floor to where that rules.
That's it?
Come to the floor.
That's the guy out of Valley City.
I guess I don't get the Gacke picture, so I don't know that.
Did you get the Gacke picture?
So what we probably should do is just call, you know, have, call D-Wolfe and then he does, I think he works for the guy out of Valley City for the board.
Yeah.
And he'll know what permits we need too, obviously have the county highway.
Yeah.
Because he can do the cost per foot.
Yeah, works for me.
We'll get you some numbers.
Thanks, we need to get expensive shitter.
Yeah.
For the party? Blue house?
All right, I think a motion to adjourn now.
I'll make a motion.
Jeffrey, second? Andy or Larry? Andy, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.
You guys have a fantastic.
You don't want football.
Could you mail, uh, the budget from Mary Wilfong? So, would you mail it?
Go to L A, I'd mail it.
I don't need care.
Huh?
Oh, I'm just.
Yeah, absolutely, I agree with you, not a problem.
Thank you.
Can I see you before you go?